Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the city council meeting today. I'd like to remind everyone to make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Eva Nelson for the row call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we are grateful and thankful for today, a day of life, health, and strength. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve in government. We ask your guidance. Now we ask that you would lead us, give us the wisdom and knowledge to do the things that are best for our city and the citizens of our city. We ask your continued blessings upon our mayor and upon our city council and everyone that works for our city government and those that live in our city. We thank you that you have been so gracious and kind to us, to prosper our city, and we ask that you would continue to bless us. Thank you for what you've done, what you're doing, and the things that you're going to do. We pray this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meetings held on March 18th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of March 14th through the 20th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations and also for special guests, and we have two out of those today. And I'm going to go down here to the podium and... I learned on Saturday that today, March 25th, is the National Medal of Honor Day. And I'm going to read to you what the Medal of Honor is. The Medal of Honor is the United States' highest military award for bravery in combat. Established by President Abraham Lincoln in 1861, it's presented by the President on behalf of Congress. The Medal of Honor is awarded to members of the armed forces who distinguish themselves through exceptional gallantry and bravery at the risk of their lives, above and beyond the call of duty. It's awarded sparingly. Only 3,525 have been given since 1863. Well, we are honored today to recognize Colonel Ola Lee Mize, who lived in Gadsden, born in Gunnersville but lived in Gadsden, I guess, most of his adult life, or all of his adult life. We're equally honored to have his bride, his widow, Ms. Betty Mize, with us today. And Ms. Mize, if you would, if you would come forward while I read the proclamation that we have for you. And it's an honor to have you here with us today. Thank you so much for coming, and especially on the short notice.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here.
All right. Well, bear with me here as I get the glare off of here. This is from the City of Gadsden, Alabama, a proclamation. Whereas Master Sergeant Ola Lee Mize, a member of Company K in the Korean War, distinguished himself by conspicuous gallantry and outstanding courage above and beyond the call of duty in action against the enemy in the defense of Outpost Harry on June 10th through the 11th, 1953. And whereas Sergeant Mize was recommended for the Medal of Honor but initially refused, saying it should go to the troops who died defending Outpost Harry. He finally received the Medal of Honor in 1954 from President Dwight D. Eisenhower. And whereas, Ola Lee Mize remained in the Army after Korea and became an officer. His service record includes the following: Special Forces Officers Course in 1962, 7th Special Forces Group, 18 leader with 5th Special Forces Group in Vietnam in 1963, Special Forces Training Group at Fort Bragg, North Carolina, deployment to Vietnam in 1966 through 1967 and 1969 as Commander of the 3rd Mobile Strike Force. Assigned as Chief for the Special Forces School, Field Training Division at Fort Bragg as a Colonel, Commander of the US Army JFK Institute for Military Assistance, later renamed Special Warfare School. Other awards included the Silver Star, Purple Heart, Legion of Merit, Bronze Star, Cross of Gallantry, Master Parachute Dispatch and Glider Badge, Scuba Badge, Ranger Tab, Ranger Hall of Fame, Scuba Badge, and Combat Infantryman's Badge. And whereas upon his retirement in 1981, Colonel Mize moved to Gadsden with his wife, Betty Jackson Mize, where he was involved in military affairs and often gave motivational speeches. Throughout the remainder of his life and after his death in 2014, Colonel Mize was honored in many ways, including induction, as a distinguished member of the Special Forces Regiment at Fort Bragg in 2009, naming a portion of Steel Station Road in his honor in 2010, placing a permanent display at the Patriots Museum, being pictured on special stamps honoring Korean War Medal of Honor recipients in 2014, naming the Headquarters Building at the Special Forces Underwater Operations School in Key West, Florida for him, awarding a scholarship to Gadsden State Community College in his honor, and naming the Colonel Ola Lee Mize Department of Veterans Affairs Clinic in Gunnersville, Alabama for him. And whereas Tuesday, March 25th, is the National Medal of Honor Day, and it is fitting and proper to honor Gadsden's Medal of Honor recipient, Colonel Ola Lee Mize. Now therefore, I, Craig Ford, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, Alabama, hereby join with the Gadsden City Council in proclaiming Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, as Colonel Ola Lee Mize Day in the City of Gadsden, honoring his service to his Lord, City, community, and nation, and extending our sincere gratitude to his family for his many sacrifices. Wow. So, Mr. President, can I say something, please? After the call. Ms. Mize, that was a... I can say this, being a soldier, there'll never be a soldier like that come out of Gadsden, Alabama, much less probably out of the military in a long, long time. And it's an honor to have you here. It's an honor to recognize him. It's just amazing. But I will say this, behind every good soldier's a good spouse. And he couldn't do... He could not have done what he did without you and the support of hometown heroes like yourself. And we want to thank you and thank your family for everything that they've done for our country.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much. Would you care to say thank you or anything?
Just thank you. I can't say anything right now.
Well...
Thank you.
Sure. Hey, Ms. Mize, you want to get a... Can we get a photo here? Let me hold this.
Sure.
One, two.
Thank you so much.
I will say, I've been a neighbor of the Mize family just about all my life. I can remember as a child riding bikes in our neighborhood. The Mizes have two very pretty daughters, and somehow us boys would have to ride our bikes by their house, Mayor. I don't know how that worked, but... And I always... It would seem outside from time to time, and I don't know if it was... I know I had a lot of respect for him, but I was also scared of him. He just looked like... I mean, he was just... God, what a man's man, you know? He was just... But the nicest guy and just one of the best. And so, I'm very proud that I did know him and proud that you're here today and proud that we could make this honor for you and for your family and also in the memory of Colonel Mize. And I agree, Mayor, there's... God doesn't make but a few of these type folks. And so, we're blessed to have one from Gadsden, Alabama. So, thank you very much. Glad you were here today. Well, that was quite an event. Thank you, Ms. Nelson, for writing the proclamation and doing all the research for that. That was really good. Well, we'll continue on with some other exciting things. We are actually going to recognize and celebrate not one but two birthdays up here on the city council panel. I believe we'll start in District 2, Councilman Smith. Somebody has told me it's your birthday. These ladies have, I think, cookies. And then, Councilman Robinson in District 7. We have Councilman Wilson help to get some gold-plated cookies for you, for your honor your birthday.
Little gold sprinkles.
So, we will... Melcy and Brittany are going to pass those out while we recognize you guys and say happy birthday to you. Why don't we sing happy birthday while they're passing them out? All right. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Councilmans. Happy birthday to you. All right. And a big thanks to the Mayor's Office and Administration. They've been real nice to the council. They've recognized our birthdays and got us little snacks or cookies or cakes or whatever. These look really good. These are some cream-filled cookies instead of cake. I think I like these better. The icing doesn't get on my nose when I take a big bite out of them. Yeah, they are. Thanks, Melcy. Thanks, Brittany. Everybody get one? Looked good. All right. Well, we appreciate everybody's patience and indulgence here. Any other special guests, Mayor, that we have? Sure that we don't have anymore, do we? All right. Well, we'll keep moving forward. We'll go to unfinished business, and we have none today in Section 8. So, we'll go to Section 9. This is the time and place is advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license. This is for CJ's Crab Shack LLC, doing business as CJ's Crab Shack, located at 514 Broad Street in District 5, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone wish to speak in favor? All right. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Shall move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. We'd like to welcome CJ's Crab Shack back to downtown Gadsden. They've been on Rainbow Drive for a few years. They do a great job. They will be welcomed, I'm sure, on Broad Street. Thank you very much. All right. Item 10 is new business. I believe we have a few items today. Can we start? Can we go in chronological order, Councilwoman Latham? Did I catch you mid-bite there?
You're good.
Okay.
Yes, this is legal document 2025-323, and this is coming from the Fire Department. This is an ordinance amending City Code Section 5034. And what this is amending is it will take... The difference is it will give the staffing of personnel decisions will be determined by the chief rather than by the assistant chief. And I would ask that my colleagues will consider this for... Will consider this today.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Avery, I believe you have two. You can probably do those together, I guess, right?
All right. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask to join these two together, being that they are both coming from the Special Events App. These are legal document 2025-327, 2025-326, Resolution Authorizing Agreement with Brio Lives Ace Party Band Summer Concert Series, May 6, 2025, Resolution Authorizing with Boots Scootin' Boogie LLC Summer Concert Series, June 6. The first one is for $6,850. The second one is budgeted for $5,000. And to add context to these, that all... Both of these will be... Are paid for by the sponsor... What is it? Who is it again?
Sam Bothwell.
Sam Bothwell, who is one of our car dealers, right? Dealerships here.
Honda dealership.
Honda dealership here in the City of Gadsden. So, appreciate that, not coming out of the budget, but also give an opportunity for our sponsor to show its support for the city and give more entertainment to our edition First Friday event that is coming up for this summer. I'm going to ask for it to suspend the rules and bring this for passage today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both resolutions under new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
All right. Consider vote.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson, I believe you have one also.
There it is. Yeah, the Senate Bill. There we go. Okay, this is a little bit of state legislative housekeeping here. Sorry about that. This is a little bit of a state legislative housekeeping here from the Revenue Department has requested us to pass a resolution opposing Senate Bill 12 and Senate Bill 29. I won't bore you guys too much with the dirty details of this, but essentially, the state of Alabama, the Senate, is attempting to pass a couple pieces of legislation that would change the way our Revenue Department can govern businesses operating in the city, specifically businesses when they come in from out of state, or if they want to do business in the city but they don't have a city business license. These two pieces of legislation would severely restrict municipalities' ability to control how we issue business licenses in the city. And so, the Alabama League of Municipalities, which is the organization that the City of Gadsden is a member of, along with all the other cities in the state of Alabama, or most of the other cities in the state of Alabama, the Alabama League of Municipalities has come out in opposition to this legislation, and they've requested all the member municipalities to make a similar statement of opposition. So, we'll do that to show that the Alabama League of Municipalities that we're a team player with that organization, and we'll continue to work behind the scenes, hopefully, to get a resolution to this that wouldn't result in essentially an unfunded mandate from Montgomery to us that would cost a lot of money for us. So, again, this... I'm going to spare you guys the boring language that's in this, but that's essentially what it is. It's a resolution opposing Senate Bill 12 and Senate Bill 29. So, given that this is up for consideration right now in the Alabama Legislature during this session, time is of the essence, so I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilwoman Minatra, I believe you have one?
Yes, Mr. President. I have 2025-320, and this is amending our City Code under nuisance and abatement. And basically, it's pretty short and sweet. It's amending the height of the grass and weeds from 12 inches to 15 inches. So, given that we're approaching our grass-cutting season, I'd like to ask my colleagues to suspend the rules and take this piece of legislation up today for consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Councilwoman Minatra. Councilman Robinson, finish us off here with your new business that you have.
Thank you, Councilman Back. I get the fun one here. It's Christmas in March, you guys. You know, the City of Gadsden, we cannot be outdone, so we are purchasing another Christmas tree, and this is the time to purchase them because they're severely discounted at this time of year. So, we are purchasing this tree to go just a tad bit larger... Well, not a tad bit larger, a good bit larger than the one we had on at the Christmas at the Couso last year. We're actually going to move that tree from Christmas at the Couso to Knuckle at the Falls. And then, that tree at the Falls that we have up there, we're going to bring it back down to City Hall, the new City Hall on Broad Street, because it's going to fit there perfectly and proportionally. So, we're going to have three good-sized trees for the festive season here in Gadsden, Alabama. But this is from the Legal Department, 2025-325, requested by the Finance Department. It's a resolution awarding bid number 3597 from Jubilee Decor LLC for a commercial outdoor 77-foot panel Christmas tree. I would ask my colleagues to suspend the rules and consider this as new business today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
And before I move to adopt, I did skip this part. This is not taxpayers' money. Let me repeat that. Not taxpayers' money. This is money raised by the Mayor's Ball, the money from that event, and also grant money. So, again, this is just fun money. I won't call it fun money. That's probably the wrong word to say, but...
It's going to create fun.
It's going to create fun. It's going to create tourism dollars. This is positive money. This is money that's going to do good things for City of Gadsden, put everybody in a happy holiday spirit. Merry Christmas, everybody. Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Do we get a second?
Yeah. Councilwoman Latham, seconded.
Oh, okay. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Merry Christmas. Thank you, Councilman Robinson. That finishes up our new business. We'll go to item 11, which is department reports, committees, and boards. Do we have any today, Mayor? No, sir. All right. And we'll go to remarks by the Mayor and Council. Mayor Ford, good to have you here today.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Today, unveiling of the Gadsden Industrial Park sign will be at 1:30. That's out next to Church of the Highlands. Jimmy, who is in our sign department, and Dan. Jimmy did all the brickwork. He's known for a lot of the signs, Rainbow Perez, the Catholic Church, and some other brick signs. We're going to honor him today and thank him for doing that. The Airport Authority paid for the sign. If you haven't seen it, it looks really nice, and it's helping us already to recruit industry as we speak. This Saturday, we have a Free Dumpster Day at 7:00 a.m. to noon. The sites will be East Gadsden Community Center, West Megan Sports Complex, the back parking lot of the YMCA, and the City Landfield will be open till noon. So, we've had great success in these dumpster days. Tina King and the Public Works Department host these. Please look online on what is accepted and what isn't accepted, but usually, we fill up quick. So, if you want to take part in this event, be there at 7:00 a.m. The campground, Knuckle Falls Ribbon Cutting, will be at 2:00 p.m. on Thursday, so we ask everybody to attend. Ms. Eva, I hope the council's getting something. But the campground only had available 15 slots available this last weekend, and we hadn't even started advertising. So, the campground's a huge hit. We got some little minor details we're working through with the contractor, nothing that's not being handled by the engineering, so we're hitting punch list as we go. Congratulations, one to John Moore and to the premier cinemas for saving the cinemas. I noticed in another city last week, John, that they shut down... It was on 280 in Birmingham, I think it was.
I saw that, yeah.
And they shut their cinemas down. We went back and forth with the cinemas and the mall owners and had a great working relationship with the cinema owners and were able to come up with an incentive deal with approval of the council, and we were able to save the cinemas. And they had a grand ribbon cutting the other night, and it was very, very nice. If you haven't seen it, you can sit in a recliner and watch a movie, and it's amazing to see how movies have come a long way from the drive-in back behind Arby's to this. So, Whataburger's on the next ribbon cutting, and then we got another ribbon cutting at the Falls for the fire station coming up sometime in mid-April. So, that fire station's looking good with its red doors and red windows. So, again, Ms. Mize, thank you to honor you today. It was quite an honor. And I want to just continue to say, we're continuing to pray for Councilman Steve Smith and his family and the loss of his mother. He knows why I couldn't be there, but I want to just say to Councilman Smith, we love you, we're praying for you, and we just put all our hugs around you, buddy.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Councilwoman Latham, nothing today? All right, thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say again, congratulations to Ms. Mize, as the Mayor had already stated. I want to just tell everybody, thank you for all the calls, texts, phone calls, all the love shown here from City Hall, just cards and messages from so many people. I also want to just thank you, Mayor Ford, for the amazing proclamation, the staff, and that was a wonderful tribute to my mother. I appreciate that. And thank you, President Back, for coming and presenting that. I just want to just take a moment to say that my mother was the most amazing woman that I ever known, the first woman I've ever loved. She had me as a teenager, never experienced a prom, never went to a dance. My mother didn't even graduate from high school, no high school diploma, no college. And when we did the proclamation, I told them, that's nothing fancy I have to say about my mom. No sorority, she was just a mom, and somehow, with the help of God, raised two pastors. My middle brother is the high school basketball coach for Sillikaga Girls Basketball Team. His daughter is Player of the Year this year there, my niece. And one brother works for Trent Thrasher Construction, and my sister's a business owner downtown. I don't see no other way that could happen without the help of God. So, I just wanted to give her a tribute and thank God for raising us the right way to treat everybody the way we want to be treated. Thank you, Mayor Ford, for feeding our family after my mom's passing. Just want to let everybody know, we appreciate them. President Back almost got to preaching. My mother, that nobody even knew, probably drew the largest crime we've ever had at our church before since we've been there. So, I want to thank God for her legacy. Also, Councilwoman Latham, thank you for being in attendance, and anyone else that I did not see. And thank everybody for the birthday wishes. I appreciate it, and I love you back. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery?
President, just want to dito the remarks as it relates to the brief to both Mr. Moore and Councilman Smith. So, I want to make sure the community is definitely aware of this Saturday as it relates to the dumpster day. This is very, very important that we hear this, we listen to this, we like it, we share it, we put it all over social media and all of the platforms that people can be reached and understand. Yesterday, I made a phone call of some guys that was dumping with face masks on that couldn't be noticed. They caught them, got with them. Guys were supposed to be getting it up. Well, got off of work around about 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock this morning, and guess what? There's trash all over the place there. So, it bothers me to the utmost to... So, it bothers me to the utmost to wear that. It is known, because literally, sitting on the porch the other day, a gentleman pulled up and said, hey, man, I put some stuff out in front of the house, somebody told me that I didn't supposed to do it. I want to make it right, what is that protocol? And so, therefore, we do have people that really do care about our community, and so, I'm so grateful for those that do. And so, to those that don't, I'm wishing the world's worst as it relates to penalty-wise that we can create from this platform, and I will be the one that present it and come up with it if possible, because we have been doing this for quite some time as it relates to District 3 and cleanup-wise. So, I also ask that you pay attention to the social media platforms as it relates to the citywide cleanup, and then District 3 has always had their cleanups, even when I was with CCRC. So, I want to make sure that we're aware that we will be partnering with PALS, Honda, and some other organizations that will come out and participate. We do have our bags available. They have come in from Montgomery, and our pickup sticks and things of that nature. So, but I do want to make sure that we participate in all of the city functions so that we can create an extra-clean community as we do our best to bring some livelihood to our community this summer. There are some events going on, I don't have them. I told the people that I didn't want to be an announcement-maker for all these events that was coming. So, I just want you to just pay attention to the Facebook platforms and social media platforms for these events. We do, we're looking forward for a great summer for our community and for our city. So, just pay attention to our platforms. I believe they'll be posted there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
I don't have anything, other than to say War Eagle. Let's go over.
War Eagle. Councilwoman Monatra?
Um, thank you, President Back. I just wanted to recognize that March is Women and History Month. And we have a lot of recognition that we could give to the past, but I'd like to just focus on the future. Not a comprehensive list, but just a few ladies that have given a lot already to the city of Gadsden and have a lot more to give. But I wanted to start with a special birthday that is this Thursday. A lady that gave a lot to the city of Gadsden and still does, Ms. Claudia German, is going to celebrate 102 this Thursday. So, a special birthday wish to Ms. Claudia. But just to recognize a few, like I said, it's not a comprehensive list, but just a few of the women in Gadsden that give a lot and are making history right now as we speak. So, I'm going to start with the mayor's team, and that's Tina King for City Services and Ruth Moffett for Community Development, among other things. I'd like to include also Kay Moore for Downtown Gadsden, Inc., Tina Morrison for Greater Gadsden Tourism, Becky Nordren, our Revenue Commissioner, Nikki Tinker, who's one of our municipal judges, Cassandra Johnson, who's Circuit Clerk for the county, and also Dr. Kathy Murphy, who is the president of Gadsden State Community College. And in that same group, I'd like to recognize Sharon Menez, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Education. I'd like to also recognize Molly Gibson, who is our Director of United Way, Patricia Falcon, who is our Director of the Berry Center, and Marie Johnson, who's the Director of the Etowah County Food Bank. And as I said, it's not a comprehensive list, but these are a few people that have touched my life and are touching Gadsden in a very positive way, and I just want to congratulate them as being part of our Gadsden history. I don't want to forget our District 1 Congresswoman, Tanya Latham. And then, a very special person who's already given a lot to the city of Gadsden and continues to do it every day, and that's our city clerk, Iva Nelson. You're welcome.
Outstanding, Lee, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Well said.
Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much, just a reminder of the Knockaloo Falls campground, ribbon cutting this Thursday at 2:00. Hope to have everybody out there. The weather looks like it's going to be great. Everybody come up and enjoy that ribbon cutting and maybe do a little walk-through of the campground and see what it looks like one-on-one, because it's a great additive and a piece of property to our falls and to our community. The fire station up there is looking great. Can't wait for that ribbon cutting. That whole area with the new parking lot and everything just looks amazing. Something that has looked the same way since I was, as long as I can, since I was a little kid, and I turn 52 tomorrow. So, that's a long time coming for that little area to look like it's looking. Ms. Mize, thank you for coming out today, and congratulations on all that. The proclamation was amazing. Thank you, Iva, for writing that, that's awesome. But congratulations. And Steve, Councilman Smith, the thousand prayers are away. Thinking about you a lot lately. Thank you. That'll be all, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson, thank you very much. Well, speaking of our city clerk, Iva Nelson, Saturday was her work anniversary here at the city of Gadsden. And is it okay, can I say?
Sure.
Her 41st year, 41st anniversary. So, thank you very much. Obviously, the city violated child labor laws when they hired Iva in 1984, but... Where's Lee? Lee, is, are we out of the, whatever that thing's called? The statute of limitations, maybe? Okay, that was, but I would thank you for your dedication and service. Thank you so much. I went to Knockaloo Falls, Mayor, this Saturday, went up to the new campground. I hadn't been up there. I've just kind of waited till it got kind of finished, and I'm going to be out of town Thursday, so I'm not going to be at the ribbon cutting. I'm disappointed, but they let me drive down in there. I told them I was Craig Ford, the mayor, and they said, they let me drive down in there. So, y'all, I was blown away. It is really, really nice, really nice. I stopped and spoke with the family from East Aboga, turns out they're from East Aboga. They had three campers, they've been coming for years, and they were blown away. I mean, they're steady campers at Knockaloo Falls, and they were there, I guess, Friday night, Saturday night, and they just couldn't say enough nice things, and couldn't believe, all the underground utilities, and they were just going on and on. They got, they had dogs, so now they can take the dogs to the dog park. Grandkids were there, they were thrilled. And I was, I was trying to count how many trailers, and I realized I can't count that high. So, I was estimating 80% full, but maybe it was more than that, it sounds like. So, outstanding job by the city, the engineers, the designers, everybody. Christina, it is beautiful up there, y'all. It is really, really something else. I mean, I went home and told Kim, I'm proud I'm a part of that, a small part of that, but I'm proud to be a part of that. So, just outstanding. Councilman Smith, continue to pray for you and your family. Y'all, I was honored to get to read Steve's mom's proclamation, and it was a beautiful proclamation and a beautiful service. Music was great, but the words that were spoken were just, I mean, it was just so moving. Councilman Smith, y'all, he's an anointed speaker for the Lord. 20 people at least came forward at the end and accepted Jesus Christ as their Lord and Savior. And you could just feel the Holy Spirit, you could feel the presence of your mom. It was just a wonderful, wonderful afternoon. Councilwoman Latham and I were sitting close to each other, and you could just feel the room. It was just, it was outstanding. So, what a wonderful send-off, home-going service for your precious mother. And I agree with what you said. When I was hearing how the five children have done throughout life, what a great story. It's just, she did a marvelous job. And what a legacy you guys have and that your children and your children's children have to live with, not only your mom, but then your dad, all the things he did going on the march to DC in, what, '63, when he and Robert Avery and the other gentleman, I can't recall his name, Mr. Thomas, hitchhiked to Washington DC. I mean, man, what a family, Councilman Smith. Thank you. Thank you, and many blessings on you and your family. And then, last but not least, Ms. Mize, thank you for coming today. I'm embarrassed, I'll publicly tell you. I called her Sunday afternoon, you know, at last minute. I don't know how, I've never known that March 25th is the National Medal of Honor Day, but I won't forget it going forward, I can promise you. But you're nice to have come today on such a short notice. And I encourage all of you listening and getting to hear this, Google, go to Google and put in Colonel Ola Lee Mize Medal of Honor, or just Colonel Ola Lee Mize. You'll need an hour or more to, if you want to watch and hear everything, but it's just amazing. That proclamation was excellent, but it scratched the surface of what Colonel Mize did for our country. One story that I want to share, that he shares in his video testimony, so to speak, was that on the outpost hairy hill, I'm going to mess this up, I'll probably start crying, but he comes upon his men, Mayor Ford, and a lot of them are dead. And it turns out, the Army had put the wrong bullets in the magazine for the guns they were using. Okay, so they're in a foxhole, they're in trenches, and they're fighting the Chinese coming over these walls, and they've run out of ammunition, so they're getting this thing, and they're getting these clips. Inside the clip is the wrong ammunition. It came that way from, I guess, the manufacturer, whatever. And so, they died.